I'm here today to recognize Town of Cave Creek Public Works employee Nick Verna.
Your mic's not on.
Oh, it's not on. Okay. I met him last Friday at Harold's by chance. Briefly, his story is that he's got a 28-year-old daughter who moved here from Massachusetts about a year and a half ago to work at an animal rescue. She was brutally attacked by a pit bull and got loose and hurt her badly. So Nick moved here with his wife. He's a good guy, and that's why he moved here. And shortly thereafter, he was hired to work in our Public Works Department for Tyler and Hal. Last Wednesday, October 1st, Nick was sent out with another employee out to Spurcross to cut a tree down on the Dragon Tribe Fly Trail. It was a hot day and they were prepping and getting ready to start when a hysterical woman approached them about her husband who was experiencing serious heat-related issues. Nick stopped what he was doing and immediately went to help her with the aid for her husband. 65 years old, on vacation from Indiana and not prepared for the heat. They had one small bottle of water. Okay, it was about 90, 95 out. So Nick helped this guy out. He got him to drink some water. He checked his vitals and then offered to go make a phone call on his behalf if he could get reception. The man adamantly refused, so so after several minutes, Nick walked the man back to his car with his wife. Nick said the man with no help may have died out there. Before Nick came to Arizona, he lived in Massachusetts. He was a fireman and an EMT for 10 years, so Nick was qualified to do this. Thank God for Nick. Thank God he was ironically there. And I'd like not only to thank Nick, but also to recognize that Cave Creek has some of the best town staff in the entire valley. Let's give it up for Nick. On another note, on another note, as you all know, my colleagues here, that I've been pushing for an ordinance for Black Mountain, and I think this ties into it. When the temperature goes over 90, children under 12 and dogs should not be allowed on Black Mountain. We need to be proactive. People are moving here. They're coming from Indiana and other places where they weren't doing it maybe in 1986. We need to be proactive. Thank you.
Other announcements? Seeing none, I call the public.
I have none.
No, okay. Town manager report.
Mayor Council, I was going to talk a little bit about the Taste of Cave Creek. As you know, there's a proclamation and we have representatives here tonight that are here for that. This year, it's going to be a little bit more unique than it has been the last couple of years in that the town is an active participant as a in-kind cosponsor. And as part of the enhancement, this upcoming year, we're going to also have what's called the Mayor's Cup. The mayor and a group of council members will help judge basically the various different food vendors that are there. And based on criteria, award the Mayor's Cup and also second and third prize winners. We're also going to have a booth there and tickets are also going to be distributed to the mayor and council. So we're also helping with some of the things such as the security through using the Arizona Rangers. And also we were allowing the use of our banner sign for the use of this event. So anyways, wanted to let you know about that. You also know the last several weeks, we've had storm events and down wells and, you know, sewer issues. And this was the first week in about three weeks that we did not have any major issues going on. And we're looking forward to not having any issues. But as you know, we have a storm coming up and I've talked to the staff about preparedness and readiness. Because it looks like we can really be experiencing quite a bit of rainfall. So we're going to continue to be vigilant for this upcoming five days where the rainfall is going to be hitting and try to anticipate what may need to be done as part of that, both in preparation, but also in cleanup and dealing with the after effect. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, there are three storms out there, one of which is a hurricane. It's and they're so marinated by the projections towards us. It's got a lot of land to cover before it gets here, but we're not equipped for a lot of rain. The proclamations, we have two. First is the Arizona Cities and Towns Week. The citizens of Cave Creek rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community and cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week to deliver vital city services such as fire, police, emergency medical response to ensure safe communities. And cities and towns in Arizona also provide programs that enhance the quality of life for residents such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs. And whereas it is important for Cave Creek to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community. And whereas it is one of the responsibilities of town officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means. And whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by Cave Creek can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Cave Creek joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state of Arizona in declaring October 19th through the 25th, 2025, Arizona Cities and Towns Week.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor Council, Teresa and I and a group of other employees are planning an event to recognize all of our employees, the week of Arizona Cities and Towns Week. In fact, we're going to hold a luncheon over at Frontier Town. And it will be a catered event by Hanson's, and so we're looking forward to that. We'll provide additional details if the council wishes to attend as well. So but nice little way of thanking our employees for all that they do, particularly since the last storms, there's been a lot of them involved in doing a lot of the cleanup, so.
Great, thank you. We have another proclamation because it is October and it is the Taste of Cave Creek Month. Oh, excuse me.
Skip the first two.
Okay. I just read that. Thank you, Cynthia. Whereas the Taste of Cave Creek is for being a culinary and cultural showcase drawing residents and visitors alike. Whereas the event brings together local restaurants, talented chefs and artisans, offering guests a chance to sample an impressive variety of dishes, beverages and desserts that reflect the unique flavors of Cave Creek and its surroundings. Whereas Stagecoach Village will once again become the epicenter of flavor and festivity as it hosts the highly anticipated Taste of Cave Creek. Whereas the Mayor's Cup Award recognizes the best of show at the Taste of Cave Creek. The award will go to the restaurant that exemplifies the Cave Creek way by showcasing an outstanding presentation, exceptional quality and exquisite taste in their food offered to visitors. Whereas the Taste of Cave Creek helps small businesses connect with new customers and build lasting relationships. Many of the featured restaurants are family-owned with recipes passed down through generations. By attending, you're not only supporting the heartbeat of the local community, but also celebrating the unique flavors that define Cave Creek. Whereas the Taste of Cave Creek will take place on Wednesday, October 22nd and 23rd from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Stagecoach Village located at 7100 East Cave Creek Road. And whereas the Town of Cave Creek is a proud sponsor of this Cave Creek tradition, where no event is more anticipated by both locals and visitors than the annual Taste of Cave Creek. I, Robert Morris, Mayor of Cave Creek, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 22nd and 23rd as Taste of Cave Creek Days in Cave Creek, Arizona, and urge Cave Creek residents, their family members and visitors to join the fun and taste the outstanding foods and local beverages created by local restaurants. Dance with the live music and be a part of the fun of Taste of Cave Creek. So one of our signature events in town, we really thank Stagecoach Village and Mark and Patty and putting this on, Jen, I guess. Go ahead, Mike.
Hold on. Yes. Mayor, I'd like to thank yourself and council and staff, particularly Grady and Beau and Teresa and Adam, Luke. We're very excited about the event this year. We have 25 restaurants, I think 50 beer vendors. I think we were hoping that council and whoever shows up for the Mayor's Cup doesn't eat for a couple of days beforehand because you might need to bring a big appetite. But we're really excited about it. We're hoping we see maybe 4,000 people over the course of two days. So we think we think of this as like our gift to Cave Creek. It's like the neighborhood block party. And we're looking forward to everybody coming out and, you know, hopefully the rain will stay away and it'll be a great event. So looking forward to it.
Well, we owe you. I mean, the Taste of Cave Creek went for years and the town put it on. And then COVID hit and it went dead and you all have resurrected it and it's a great, great service to the town. It's a wonderful event. I think I've been many, many times and you deserve a lot of credit for what you bring to the town. And Stagecoach Village has been wonderful for the town. So thank you.
Appreciate all the help that you guys have given.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the item, we have on the, we have a consent agenda. Is there a listing of projects? There are none?
Yeah.
Okay, well. Thought there were earlier, but anyway, okay. General agenda items, the council discussion, possible approval, accepting dedication of private property totaling 25 acres in a desert rural DR 190 zone located within southwest quarter section 17 T6 North and R4 East.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is perhaps one of the neatest things I've ever gotten to present to the town council. And really, what makes it even more special is I had little to, nothing to do with it. I answered a phone call and reached out via email and spent some time corresponding with a very special man, Mr. Alan Rosenus, who is the owner of 25 acres adjacent to open space zone, state trust land, near the end of Kahava Ranch Road. Really, this was all put in motion by the Morning Star Ad Hoc Trail Committee. You, if council recalls, they received a list of recommendations and alternatives. One of those alternatives included a trail in the vicinity of this property and actually through this property to which Bambi Mueller contacted the different landowners in the area just to see what the level of interest was in dedication of a trail as an alternative route to the Morning Star alignment that had been discussed. The owner, Mr. Rosenus, I believe, started corresponding with Stacy Daniel, who's a member of that ad hoc committee, who was able to funnel Mr. Rosenus to DFLT and Vicki Preston. Both are here this evening. And ultimately, due to the needs and wishes of Mr. Rosenus, landed in our lap. And really, the reason that council is considering accepting this this evening is because of the, number one, the tax implications. He is, he is getting on in years and is thinking about the benefits from donating this property and also the timing. This is something that the town could readily put on an agenda and accept. Our discussions with, the town's discussions with Mr. Rosenus began August 26th. So to get us to this point is actually, as far as bureaucracy goes, pretty amazing. That's, that's my spiel. This property would be conveyed to the town should council approve acceptance tonight. We have opened escrow already to meet his, his desired deadline of October 24th for closing. And should council approve this tonight, we'll continue to move forward with that. Should council deny acceptance, then we would go to the title company and have that escrow agreement or escrow agreement extinguished. That's all I have at this point.
Questions from council? Cynthia?
Just a question on the timing of the appraisal coming back.
The appraisal is done.
Okay.
So is this the only piece needed for the West Side Trail connection? Is there any other, are there any other pieces that haven't been secured yet?
No, this this does provide, it's directly adjacent to open space that ASLD has in holding. There is no connection east of that.
So we'd have to get ASLD, but as far as private property, is this?
There's, there's quite a bit of private property between this and the closest public right of way.
So we would, we still need more, more work to get more right of way for a trail in that area.
That is correct.
Yes, okay. Other questions from council?
He's giving this to us?
Yes, sir.
Sounds like a no-brainer. Thank you, Ms. Daniel.
There's a ton of people that deserve credit on this. Absolutely.
It's, it's just too good to be true. Frankly, it's marvelous. So.
Can we hear from Vicki? What do you think?
The huge.
He's got a.
Speakers.
We have to wait for the speakers.
Okay.
I believe they've all filled out requests.
Okay, okay, yeah. All righty then. We'll hear from the we answer our questions. So yeah, we'll call, we'll hear the speakers now.
Vicki Preston.
Oh, look at that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Yes, it almost does sound to be true. Welcome to my job. Yeah, as Luke explained, this was a, an interesting turn of events that brought this together. I'm just a little bit more clarification in the background. Spent most of my summer playing phone tag with Mr. Rosenus. Finally got ahold of him, explained our process, which is kind of a lengthy process because when we take on land, it's forever. So we have to do a lot of due diligence. That's per our policies, but also for us to maintain our highest standards of accreditation by the Land Trust Accreditation Commission. That includes things like mineral remoteness reports, ALTA surveys, the appraisal, all of that generally takes about six months when I'm really pushing it. And Mr. Rosenus wanted to give it to us yesterday. So he said, forget it. That's not going to work. I'm going to give it to Brown University. Thank you. And was about to hang up. So quick thinking, I'm like, well, can I, you know, talk to you a little bit more about this? And knowing that this was a priority for the town and the trail, I said, would you consider gifting it to the town? Let me tell you why this would be such a great idea. Mentioned the petroglyphs that are to the north that I know of, the surrounding protected areas. And it piqued his interest a little bit. And this all happened on a Friday when I know the staff is not working. So they answered calls and we were able to run this up the flywheel pretty quickly and prevent him from getting it to going to Brown University. Sorry, Brown University, but they were, you know, they would most likely chop it up into pieces and sell it off. So, so this was a quick and thanks to the town for being able to move so quickly on doing something like this where we just wouldn't have that ability. So again, just another example of the great partnership we have with the town and the staff and all of you, so.
Wow.
Well, you guys have been a wonderful part. You've been a wonderful partner. We've been a partner to you over the years. So this is just another one. We thank you for all the work you do.
Absolutely. And we're here to talk, you know, we're talking to Luke about further partnership as far as if there's conservation easements or any, you know, land management, anything that need help with in this property. So I'm also helping Mr. Rosenus with the tax.
So you are going to help Luke with all the things you would take six months to do so that he does, so we have the same rights and everything?
Okay.
Yeah.
I need all the help I can get. Thank you.
Yeah, Vicki, I would.
We all noticed.
I would, I would have to say in my world where I come from, Michigan touchdown. I knew you'd say that.
Any other questions I can answer for you all?
Other questions?
Again, obviously I support you accepting this gift.
Thank you.
Can you do it again?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, what's, what's next?
Well, Blue.
Kathleen A. B.
Yeah, that's another step along the way. Wow.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. I think this is a beautiful gift. I don't know Mr. Rosenus. I know from conversations with Stacy that she's had many conversations with him. And he was desirous to do this. I was aware of the Brown thing and I'm so grateful that you jumped in and did that. So it's very generous, very kind for us to have 25 acres is a lot. And I just hope that the town takes it in the spirit and the intent that he has given it as conservation, open space and a non-motorized trail. I don't know if it's in the deed restrictions and that. I'm very sensitive about that. So all it says in the language in the agenda item is a land bridge. That's kind of ambiguous in my, in my brain, so. But I think it's a wonderful gift and I do support that you guys accept this gift and continue the beauty and the uniqueness of what Cave Creek is. I have a big heart for this little town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy Daniel?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Alan Rosenus is our immediate property neighbor. And although he and I have never met in person, for the last 16 years, we have corresponded via phone and email regarding various topics, including the Ho-Ho Come petroglyphs on his ridge, all things relating to Mark's staff in our immediate neighborhood, quit claims, the two wildfires in 2020, and our private road maintenance agreement, which Jill Piovano bequeathed me custodianship back in 2009. Throughout these years, I've come to know Alan's unwavering dedication and commitment for the preservation and conservation, not only for his properties, but for nature and wildlife at large. Volunteering on last year's Morning Star Task Force Committee gave me a better understanding and recognition for the need of trail connectivity linking nearby neighborhoods to open space. And Alan's property, it has just this most beautiful existing trail. Could conceivably be a huge step toward that advancement to that connection. My husband Fred and I are in favor that this council vote yes in accepting Alan's properties for the purpose and advancement of the public non-motorized trail network and open space preservation. And we are very appreciative of the efforts put forth by Vicki and Bambi and the to opening up the dialogue with Alan over a year ago, as well as other town staff that helped provide Alan with the necessary information he needed to ultimately come to this arrangement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy.
No additional speakers.
Sure.
What, what is the appraised value? You don't remember?
I honestly can't tell you exactly what it was. I, I got it. I don't remember. I got it, opened it and sent it to Mr. Rosenus and I didn't, I almost just out of sight, out of mind because ultimately that was going to be his baseline for whether or not to say, yeah, I'm comfortable with this as far as the tax credit goes. So I didn't want to kind of imbue myself to be like, well, that's too high or too low.
So is there a privacy reason then?
No, 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 no. I honestly, I looked at it and struck it from my mind immediately and just crossed my fingers and waited for him to respond and say that he was fine with it and willing to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, that is, that's typical. Many times, private property owners ask the city or town to weigh in and attest to the value so they get, have, they use that as documentation for their deduction. Luke was wise to stay, stay out of it.
Okay. There, I guess we're ready, at this point, ready for a motion. So everyone's going to fight for this one.
I make a motion that we grab the land.
Second.
Okay, second by council.
Yeah.
I move to accept, to approve acceptance of 25 acres of property and authorize the town manager to execute any documents necessary to complete conveyance of land from Mr. Alan H. Rosenus to the Town of Cave Creek for the purposes and advancement of the public non-motorized trail network and open space preservation.
Second.
Okay, well, I'm not sure how to handle this. We had two, well, let's just vote.
It's not.
It can be a joint vote.
We'll let the minutes figure that out. Okay, so comments?
Joe?
Joe.
Oh, okay. Comments? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know Mr. Rosenus. I'm just, I'm assuming he's been in town a long time. Oh, no? Okay, well. Well, he's a good guy and we should probably get a card to send him and have everybody sign it, so.
Way ahead of you.
Okay, good.
Fabulous opportunity. Thank you to our community members and Vicki for your expertise and help and being in good stead with your neighbor for all those years. It's important.
Spurcross, Greenberg property, 30 acres up above Spurcross. This is an ongoing process. It has been phenomenal for the town. The partnership among the land trust, the town, the state, the county has served Cave Creek extremely well, as have all of you that worked on it.
Comments from down here? Cynthia?
It's a wonderful gift for the town and I think it's the type of action from our residents and participation by other residents and interested parties to set in place the momentum that we are going to need in the future for even bigger and greater preservation. So job well done. Thank you.
Tom?
Oh, I don't really have anything, but maybe this is the hors d'oeuvre before the banquet of 4,005 acres next November.
Dusty, you want to weigh in?
No, I think it's a, I think it's a great deal for the town and I'm, you know, very appreciative of Mr. Rosenus and all the folks who participated in this. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I certainly, I can't say any better. I just can't believe this fell out of the sky with, with you attached to it, Vicki, but helped it fall out of the sky. But, you know, the progress is, is continuing. We've, we continue to make progress. I'm really pleased that we're, you know, the 4,000 acres is well underway and of course the acreage of Spurcross at the entrance. And we continue to make really, really big bites of open space. And so that's a proud achievement that I think Cave Creek should enjoy and we will enjoy for the rest of time. So on that, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, 7-0.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council.
Next is the council discussion, possible approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix to allow the town to place a water meter collector on the Mount Gillan Radio Tower site.
Evening, Mayor and Council. And I apologize, I put some exhibits in the attachment, they went in the council report, but I didn't have anything, I forgot to put them in tonight. But really, Mount Gillen is the radio tower site. If people don't know, it's at the base of 7th Avenue, South of Carefree Highway. It's in the City of Phoenix is a park in that area. It's actually part of the Regional Wireless Cooperative, the emergency tower system that runs around the valley. So through our discussions with the City of Phoenix, they've allowed us to actually put one of our meter collector sites. These are important because as we've started to convert our water meter system from the drive-by system to the automatic meter infrastructure, AMI system, we need collector sites so that effectively they're, they're up there listening for the, the meters themselves. So our goal here is that this actually is really well-placed. We'd be actually on the side of the site, just in their parking lot. We're actually going to do a solar powered installation. If we're not tied into their power, we'll just be on the side of their parking lot and just looking back towards both Desert Hills, overlooking Desert Hills, and looking back to Cave Creek. So we think it'll be a really good ability to collect both meters in both systems, helping us advance the AMI metering in Desert Hills and also supporting the meters, the AMI meters that we have in Cave Creek. So again, Phoenix has been really helpful with this. They've looked at it. Effectively, our site is just up there listening for our meters and just, it has a cellular antenna that then sends that meter, that data up to the cloud, which allows us to see the usage. So we hope with this site in place, we can start quickly converting the Desert Hill system to an AMI system. So with that, I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Questions? Seeing none. Is there comment?
None.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion.
We'll go ahead.
Okay, Cynthia?
I move to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Phoenix to allow the town to place a water meter collector on the Mount Gillian Radio Tower site.
Second, Dusty, okay. Dusty of the second. Any comments?
Just seems like a good step forward.
We need to modernize. This is, this is a good deal.
Other, other council members' comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Phoenix continues to be a spectacular partner. I mean, really, yeah. Next on the agenda, council discussion, possible approval, resolution number 2025-21, authorizing an application for a drinking water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona for the Cave Creek Water System. Resolution number 2025-22, authorizing an application for a drinking water state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona for the Desert Hills Water System. Resolution number 2025-23, authorizing an application for a clean waters state revolving fund loan from the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona for the wastewater system. And resolution number 2025-24, approving sale and execution and delivery of excise tax revenue obligations. And resolution number 2025-20 And resolution number 2025-20 regarding the intention or intent to issue tax-exempt obligations.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Thank you for reading that novel, Mayor.
That's all long ones.
Yes, it is. So I want to start off by making sure that everyone understands that what we're doing tonight is not actually committing us to any sort of debt financing. It is helping us start the process. I want to make sure that that's really clear for everyone. So in the budget process, so the council had basically given direction that you wanted us to debt finance as much as possible of the utility CIP projects. Being able to do the debt financing spreads the cost out over the term of the debt, whether it's 15 years, 20 years, whatever that might be, which helps keep the rates lower for the rate increases that the customers would be paying. So it will be very helpful for that. This is a list of the three utilities in the budget process, what was adopted for the CIP projects for fiscal year '26 and the financing. So in the budget process, we had under wastewater, about 1.2 million of debt-financed projects. Cave Creek Water, as far as new debt financing, about 3.2 million. And Desert Hills Water, about 866,000. So that was in the budget process. One of the things that was asked of us was to continue to look at the list and come up with anything that could be delayed, deferred to a later year to help keep these costs down as well. When you're doing debt financing, there is an IRS rule that when we issue tax-exempt debt, which is something that the people who, who look to acquire that debt, they like that for their taxes, that it's tax-exempt. So there's rules that we have to follow in order to maintain that. If we don't maintain and follow those rules, then the IRS will say, you know what, we're taking away the tax-exempt status and it now becomes taxable debt to whoever is holding the debt. Part of that is a reasonable expectation to spend the proceeds within three years. That also includes things like arbitrage calculations that we need to spend the proceeds within that time or otherwise we could become subject to making arbitrage payments. In doing the debt financing, part of what we want to do is to bundle some of the projects within a reasonableness of being able to spend it within that three years. We looked at two years for this. What it does is it helps us to save on staff time. This is actually a very extensive, lengthy process and this has taken up quite a bit of my time just to even get to this point and we're not done. So it saves on staff time and it can also save on the issuance costs that we would incur with the debt. So what we looked at, so here for the wastewater fund, this is a revised list of our continued analysis of what projects can be deferred and things tend to change. This is a dynamic environment. Things change all the time. And so this is where we are at. It could even change again. So part of what I've done in the descriptions of the projects is made them generalize so that if something gets deferred but something else moves forward, that hopefully that will fit within the flexibility of being able to use the debt proceeds. In the list that we have right now for fiscal year '26, the debt financed projects would be about 450,000 and fiscal year '27, 625,000. That grand total is 1,075,000. What we're asking for in the documents is debt financing not to exceed 1,250,000 as we continue to refine this until we finally come up with a final number of how much we're going to ask for debt financing. This is a listing here for Cave Creek Water Fund for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. That combined total is about 4.3 million and we're asking for a not-to-exceed amount of 4.5 million. Desert Hills, so for the two years, it's about 1.3 million we're asking for and not to exceed of 1.5 million. And again, as I mentioned, so on all of these, this is what, on the revised list that we have, but we are writing this with generalized project descriptions so that there is some flexibility in how those debt proceeds are used. And the key is, is that we want to make sure that whatever we do issue in debt proceeds, our debt financing, that we spend those proceeds within the three years. What we're asking for tonight is the ability to be able to move forward with a kind of a dual track here, looking at WIFIA loans and looking at direct placement excise tax obligations. There's pros and cons to each of those options. And so we really want to look at both of them and see what will fit best for what our needs are. As far as WIFIA loans, one of the things that makes it difficult with them is it's a very lengthy process. So a few weeks ago now, in talking with our municipal advisor, Jim Strickland, he said that WIFIA was about like March, most likely, probably April as a timeline of when we get that. And that just keeps moving further and further as we move along. So that is a very long time before we would actually be able to close on something with WIFIA and be able to have the debt proceeds. Meanwhile, we have capital projects that for fiscal year '26 that we need to move forward on. And as council directed, we want to do debt financing to pay for those as, of those projects so that we're not essentially using cash, which would mostly be from general fund subsidies, not from the revenues of those funds. So that is a concern of how long it takes and the delays that could incur with the projects of waiting for that process or also reliance on cash funding. Through WIFIA, another thing that happens is they're using federal monies in these loans. So we have to comply with federal rules. And there's Davis Bacon, which is, that requires that we pay prevailing wages and a requirement to use American iron and steel. And there's other things as far as like procurement processes and things. And so it takes extra staff time and can potentially add extra costs. So that is a downside that some municipalities choose not to use WIFIA loans because of those. Another thing with the WIFIA loans is that their, their minimum requirement, if we are doing revenue-based bonds or any of those, is that we need to have revenue coverage of at least 1.2x in order to even qualify. And if we don't want to be required to have a debt service reserve, so money set aside in a reserve in case we need it to pay our debt service, then we have to have our revenue be 1.5x what the debt service amount is.
Revenue being, define the revenue. That's the, that's the total revenue?
So it depends upon whether or not we're, we're going with using the pledge of revenues of the fund, whether it's Cave Creek Water or Desert Hills Water, or if we do excise tax. So we have done excise tax in the past. We are looking at potentially doing excise tax. We have plenty of room on our coverage. We're over six times when looking at the calculations, assuming that we move forward with these. So we're, we're good there. I just don't want to, in the future, do too many excise tax.
If we use excise tax, don't we have to have the water and sewer customers pay for this?
No, the pledge and the, and what revenues pay for the debt are two different things.
Well, but if we're going to use general fund as the obligation, then there's, there's got to be in the rate structure, I believe, the water and sewer customers would ultimately have to reimburse the general fund if we're fronting the money with the general fund. That's at least according to ARS 9-TAC-530.
Is that the one that talks about it being self-supporting?
Yeah, it has to be self-supporting.
Yes, yes. So we've talked about.
Here's the problem.
Yes.
I did talk to somebody kind of privately with the legislature and they said that if, if people are aware of it and you do it anyhow, you can be sued individually rather than collectively for malfeasance as a public official. So I don't want to say it's going to happen, but when we do things with the water and sewer companies, they have to be self-sustaining. So if we're going to use the excise, and I've got no problem with doing that, the water and sewer customers are going to have to have that put in their rate structure to reimburse the general fund.
So it's actually, we, we are in violation right now because of all the general fund subsidies we've been doing regardless of the debt financing.
I know, and we need to fix that.
And so that's part of what we have talked about and looked at. And so next week, we'll be coming back with the utility rate study and where that stands. But part of what we're looking at is we do have to continue with general fund subsidies or else have astronomical rate increases for the utilities. So in, where I previously worked, the attorney there had basically told, told us there that as long as we were working towards a plan to wean off of the subsidies, then he felt comfortable with that, that he could use that argument.
I think that's, that's fair. But the question is, are we going to be incorporating some of, at least some of this into the rate study?
The, the rate study does include the debt financing and looking at repayment of general fund subsidies. That would, that's been in there since the beginning of working on the rate study.
Okay.
Sherry, just for clarification, the Times coverage that you mentioned earlier was the general fund holding, setting aside 1.2 or 1.5x the debt coverage?
Not necessarily. It's also the revenues of the fund.
Okay.
So, so if Cave Creek Water had enough revenue, one and a half times what the debt service payment was and we did it as, as a revenue debt, where that was the pledge, then we would not be required to set aside cash in a debt service reserve. It's going to take a lot of rate increases to get to that one and a half times. Substantial. So it's kind of where we're at.
Just a quick question. Why would we move this this evening before the rate studies released? Wouldn't they be kind of in tandem?
Not really. We need to get moving on this because we're already in October. We're already in the fourth month of fiscal year '26 and we have capital projects we need to move forward with. So we need, we need to move forward this regardless. It, the debt service is already built into that rate study. So we've already accounted for that. There's really very minor differences between the evaluation that we've done since the rate study information was provided to the consultants and this plan. So it's already accounted for in that. And as I said, we're still going to have to do general fund subsidies for a while. And so if we don't move forward with the debt financing and say, we want to use our cash to pay for capital projects so we can move forward on our capital projects, that's just more general fund subsidy.
So when we went through the budget process, I thought there was only like one or two more years on the water and we were out of debt from the general fund. And it was going to be about seven years, I think, for the sewer. Is that still current?
So we had the last work session on April 3rd, which was before we went through the finalization of the budget process. And there were things that were changed in the budget process. So we changed allocation of the half-cent tax that was going into wastewater fund and we made that unrestricted. And we changed the Spurcross where what's left over after the maintenance, the Spurcross was originally being split between general fund and water infrastructure.
The, the whole point of the subsidies is we were going to end the subsidies and the water in 2027, I think, 2026 or 2027.
Yes, and she's saying that we reallocated some of our budgetary funds. Right. Which is impacting it. Correct.
Would there be any wisdom, Mr. Mayor, would there be any wisdom in the resolution this evening having language added to try to give a deadline for the town and being in full compliance and no longer providing subsidies?
I think that would be premature because I think that should be tied in with the rate study and not necessarily with moving forward with capital projects.
That's why I'm kind of wondering why we're doing this tonight, Mr. Mayor. And, and we don't, I don't know what the contents of the rate study are.
I, I had the same question. I had it answered to my satisfaction. But I, I agree with you. I think we ought to explain that to the whole council because I, I had the same question. I talked with Brady about it, so.
Yeah, so, so the reason why we're moving forward with this now is because we need to start the process ASAP. It only takes even longer. And so we would end up using cash if we don't move forward with this. This is something that regardless of the rate study, as, as I said, we're going to have general fund subsidies either way for a while. It's not going to have an impact on the rate study other than spreading out costs so that we're not incurring large cash costs that we need to cover. It's actually bringing costs down because then we're paying debt service over a period of years.
Are you leaning, Mr. Mayor, are you leaning one way or the other with these two? You've outlined it, but do you have a personal?
Yeah, so if I could finish here. So on the direct placement excise tax obligations, so in that situation, there would not be debt service reserve requirements. And it is faster. So some of this stuff that's on the left-hand side, there's not the federal compliance requirements. But the con there is that the rates would typically be a little higher. And so that's part of why we want to do this, is this dual track of see what the banks would be willing to give us. And if they give us a rate that we're like, we feel good with that rate, that that's not, not something out of line. And yeah, maybe it's a little higher than WIFIA, but it's not too bad. But it gets us the cash sooner, then that would be the option. So it really depends upon what comes back from the banks on their bids.
With your indulgence, one more question. Since this resolution is moving and regardless of which way it goes, whether it's tonight or another night or whatever, would this be an opportunity to try to get a requirement date for the town's dry lines to come online? I mean, it's a decade or beyond and we have no performance requirements on future councils to try to, and if we're borrowing more money to move this project in that direction, I'm just trying to think, what can we get out of it that improves the cost ratio that we're spending new money on without a requirement that the town issued to developers many years ago to be enforced? I mean, I'm not even asking for current enforcement. Can we target a date for enforcement? Because this is just a ball. It's, or a tin can kicked out of an alley.
It is in the five-year CIP that we had adopted with the fiscal year '26 budget process. I do not remember off the top of my head what year it is in, but it is in, within that five-year CIP.
So if I can ask for clarification, that, that would actually be the deadline for bringing?
Well, it's a deadline on ourselves. I mean, it's going to require even more borrowing because those projects are, would require a lot of borrow. You're talking about the sewer system, right? The dry sewers?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to be back here with borrowing money for those that isn't included in here.
Right.
And that, those are going to be big. Yeah, much bigger than this here.
Yeah, there, there is a project to start off with of inspecting those lines to see what their condition is, to see what needs to be done, even be able to.
Said that they may not pass testing and there may be replacement or refurbishing cost or, you don't know until you examine.
That, that's a pie in the sky. Now, we don't even know the scope of that one yet. But we need to find it, yeah.
If a new development came, let me ask you. If a new development came onboard in the community, they would still be required to put in sewer lines?
Well, I'm trying to get staff to put out a new code that says that any new subdivisions have to return the water, either return the wastewater or put in a package plant if it's too far away and return the good water. But they have to return the water to town as a water conservation and to avoid building things way the hell out there and using, and using our water, which then goes in the ground. We can't get it back in time.
Do we currently not have that as a?
We do not have that. I've been trying for.
That ought to be a priority before the year is over.
Yeah, I, I agree. Mr. Town Manager, when can we have that? I put him on the spot several times.
Mr. Utility Director? Shall we have that?
Goes downhill.
So let's get building services involved too because we ought to, any new construction, they ought to be putting at least one French drain in. Any new construction.
I also have one question. Bill Sims, do you agree with the attorney's advice that she received from her previous employer?
Which issue? The one that as long as we're generally fine?
Yes.
Yes, I do. I do. Because I mean, your predecessors made that bid years ago. Yes, I do, I do. Because I mean, your predecessors made that bid years ago, and you're still sleeping in it. Now we're trying to figure out how to have a bid and put the cheese back on. I think we do need to continue to try. And I think what I'm hearing with the, but I do agree with that analysis. Thankfully, there's no alternative.
Right.
But we, we will never be out of, I mean, it's going to be a decade at least before we're out of the sewer subsidies, aren't we? And is it said, we don't even know what the cost of the new, of hooking up the dry sewer areas or serious areas that are tight enough to put in a sewer system.
There, there's placeholders in there, but
Yeah.
As you know, placeholders tend to be lower than what it ends up being because it's several years in the future.
I, I think this, what we see here is an attempt by Sherry just to get this stuff rolling on kind of the real low-level investment we need, that it's more of a maintenance investment, for example, with the sewer system, with the collection system, which overflowed in the last big rain. So we definitely need to take care of that. You know, I, I, I think that the, the other aspects of this are really not germane to this part. But, but they are good things we need to do, but they're, they're just not.
Irony in the results of the audit, which showed how much money was fabricated that was not received. This, this whole continuing epic with the utility companies just continues to be something that we just keep feeding. And I, I guess I understand, and I defer to you often to hear what your thoughts are. But, and I think the comments you just made about maintenance makes the most sense. But I, I just see a resolution moving. That seems like an opportunity for putting some deadlines or requirements in, if possible, and if appropriate. I'm not suggesting anything in particular.
Yeah, I just don't think this, that's not on the agenda tonight, and this is just about the loan. So I think it's, it would have to be a separate agenda item. Although I'm, I'm not sure people put deadlines on. We're putting a deadline on ourselves. And we, we are the town council. We should be able to say, hey, we want this done by this time. And then what, what's the plan to do that? So, I mean.
I mean, after all the money we took from the spur cross fund for all those years, not to, to find a point, but all that money that was hijacked from open space renovation used for this, and now we still have to go out and borrow more money in order to do what you recommend, and I get it, but it's just a lot of ironies to where we've put the money and how we put the money and where we're at today and what a solution looks like. You don't agree, Catherine?
Oh, I, I don't. I think, I think you have a habit of making inappropriate jabs to call the audit fabrications. I don't think they were fabrications. I think that they were estimates that were over, over, they were just overestimated. So I don't like the impression that that gives to the public that we fabricated numbers and it was disproven to cause any harm. So there's that. And then the spur cross monies went to water. We cannot survive without water. Open space is a priority for all of us. We voted in favor of preserving it again, that, that funding. But I don't consider what we spent towards saving our water supply and protecting our water utility was a waste of money or inappropriately allocated.
Thank you.
Okay. Sherry, continue.
So we do plan to come back to council with what results here, whether we feel like the, the WIFA loans are the way to go or the direct placement excise tax obligations. We will be looking at this as, is it all one or the other? Is it wastewater and desert hills or cave creek water? Do those go different routes? Some of them go the excise tax, direct placement, excise tax obligation, some go WIFA loans. We'll, we'll figure all that out once we have better information of what the, the banks are willing to bid is really because we'll get those back fairly quickly. And it'll take a long time on the WIFA loans.
It seems like there's a calculation needed here. I, I just did a quick estimate. It, it's probably cost 25% more to do Davis Bacon and American Steel. Who knows what the tariff would do to steel, but i- if, if we're going to be comparing the interest rates, we also need to compare the higher costs that go with Davis Bacon and using, and the federal people and have some kind of policy or calculation that, that corrects for that because we have, we have good credit. We have, we have money in the bank, and so we need to do the, what's, what delivers the best result over the long term.
Yeah, I agree. 1% higher on interest. And you pay 25% less for the project. That's kind of a, kind of a good trade there.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's 25% and.
Well, Davis Bacon, it used to be double.
Davis Bacon is 25% higher because you're paying union wages.
Yep.
Yeah, but if it's, if it goes to a contractor who already pays prevailing wages, then there's no difference, so.
Well, that's the bidding process, and I'm eager to see what those come out the next time we get a bid.
Yes. Okay. Um, so part of what we're asking for, so there's three resolutions, one for each of the utilities for applying, council needs to authorize us through a resolution to fill out the application for a WIFA loan to be able to start that process. And as I mentioned before, so we wrote the descriptions of the projects to allow for flexibility as things change and, and things are very dynamic. And it's very common for that to, to happen is projects get delayed and other ones need to move forward faster. So that's what the, the three resolutions are for the WIFA loans, is it's just authorizing us to be able to turn in an application. For the direct placement excise tax obligations. So the way this is written, what we're doing is we're starting the 30-day period. So if this ends up being the route that we want to go, we don't want to lose out on bids from the banks because we do a resolution that has to wait 30 days before it becomes effective. And they say, well, rates have changed. I'm not honoring that rate that was bid previously. So what some places have done in the past is do the emergency clause for an immediate, immediate effective date. But then there's been a lot of places where the municipalities are getting questioned for that practice. Is it really an emergency? And it's like, well, that's the only way you're going to get the rate. So what we're doing is saying, let's do the resolution now. The provisions in here, so we have the possibility of if all three utilities, which could be the best thing, because sometimes when you have a larger debt issuance, you'll get a better rate at times. So taking the totals of those not to exceeds for all three is 7,250,000. We're looking at nothing more than a 20-year term and possibly something even lower if it works out okay. Not to exceed a 5% bond yield. Hopefully they come in much better than that. And then again, as I said, so starting that 30-day process. As I had mentioned before, we will be coming back to council with this, so you're, you're not giving us the authority of, okay, just go do it and we'll hear about it later. They, we're going to come back to you and say, okay, here's what we came up with and make sure we have the blessing. Also included, related to the excise tax, direct placement obligations are some of the draft documents. There's the excise tax trust agreement and purchase agreement, the legal opinion that our bond counsel writes, and the requests for funding, the RFF, which will be going to the banks to get their bids.
I have a question on the excise tax purchase agreement on page two. Section C, it's a legal question. It looks like the trustee, the failure of the trustee or any other person to acquire the projects, the occurrence, any acts of circumstances may constitute failure of consideration, eviction or constructive eviction, destruction or damage of projects, the taking by imminent domain of title or so temporary use of all the projects. Why is imminent domain in there? Is that giving the, the trustee the power to seize?
Sherry, we have our bond counsel. Is he still on?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm, I'm still here. Can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Tim. Thank you.
Sure. Um, the purchase agreement and the excise tax trust agreement are really boilerplate forms that we use on, on all of the deals. The language that you're speaking about on page two of the purchase agreement has to deal with, it's not imminent domain of the trustee. It would be any other kind of imminent domain that would, that, that, that could come in and disrupt the, the project. Let me look here. I'm looking here at page two. I want to make sure that I see your. Yes, it's near the bottom of the paragraph, I believe, in sub two. It's basically saying that the, yeah, that we should comply with the provisions here of and shall not terminate this agreement for any cause. The taking by imminent name of title or temporary use. So these documents really establish the relationships. Trying to think of how far back to go because I don't want to waste time, but I want to answer your questions. So whenever we do an excise tax obligation in Arizona, it's really a, it's, it's, it's a sale and leaseback basically on paper of the asset. And so we want to make sure that for the benefit of the bondholder, that there's no way for someone to come in and say, well, this property, you know, has been taken out by imminent domain. Therefore, we have a problem in, in repaying the bonds. So it's really a catch-all provision that deals with a situation, quite frankly, that's probably would never happen. But nevertheless, to get the bondholders comfortable moving forward with this type of structure. Because again, this structure goes back, way back into the 1960s, actually, when Phoenix built the convention center cases, because excise tax bonds don't have to have the vote of the, of the people there. There was a structure, this structure was invented and blessed by the courts back then. And so we use the same types of covenants and things of that nature. So it's, that, that's, that's why that language is in there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. One other thing that I, I had wanted to mention as well regarding WIFA is, so we've written the descriptions of the projects in those resolutions pretty generally so that we could have some flexibility. We're not entirely sure if WIFA will be, because sometimes than what we really want to put in there to have that flexibility. So, so we'll, we'll see what comes back from them. There's also a fifth resolution, which allows us to be able to reimburse ourselves for expenditures that occur before the debt is actually issued. So we're able to go back 60 days. And anything, so if there are projects where they really have to start moving forward on something before the debt financing is in place, then it would essentially mean relying on the general fund's cash until the debt proceeds are available to do those reimbursements back to ourselves. So that, that resolution allows us to do that. Otherwise, we cannot go back prior to the date of the debt financing. And then there's two of the strategic plan priorities, fiscal sustainability that are relevant, protecting the revenue sources and exploring new and diverse options. And under infrastructure, doing the infrastructure and maintaining the facilities that improve quality of life for the community while being affordable and sustainable, hopefully. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you, Sherry. I do support the strategy of, of the comparison of financing and proceeding with that combination. Out of the specific items that you listed under wastewater fund and cave creek water and desert hills water, were any of those project items moved up on the timeline to fit into the 26, 27 fiscal year? Or is that where these were all falling in the plan that we have already previewed?
I think there may have been something that moved up, but most of it was actually moving things out to later years. I don't.
Sean, do you remember, like, for instance, how much we reduced this fiscal year and next fiscal year from what you had originally had in the adopted?
Yeah, council, this is probably the fifth edit to the CIP pushing projects out. So we're at bear bones. This is, this is getting us the work that we need to get done for the next two years. So yeah, when you keep, this is actually funding the adopted CIP, and we pushed a few things around already to push some stuff out beyond the schedule.
So what he's saying is basically your adopted capital improvement program for this year and next year, for sure, are, it's higher than what is going to be funded through this day. So a lot of that is because of the direction Mayor and Council gave to us because council was concerned about the dollar amounts and are these necessary projects? Are they nice to haves and all that? So Sean and his staff went through and sharpened their pencil to get the numbers down.
Thank you.
What's the total again? Not, not for this, for the CIP that you had total projects you've identified so far?
Oh, we have to go back because again, the, the five-year CIP, because we do a 10-year for the rate study and we have multiple things. So I can't remember what the adopted five-year CIP total was. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I want to say like Cave Creek Water in the five years was like there, around 30 at least, 30 million?
Yeah, I seem to remember 40 million for the whole, for all, all three, somewhere around there, you know, a little excess of that.
Just, and, and a big chunk of that was water acquisition, water resource acquisition.
Yes.
Well, we're also in, in this next couple of years, I mean, the bonds start rolling off. And that's, if I remember correctly, it's about $50 per account in the water system. So the, the, just to cover the, the bonds from 20 years ago to put those systems in. So we, we are in a, a peak for the next couple of years and getting through that with as little CIP as possible to keep safety and continuity of operation. That is, that's, that's where we are. But otherwise, you've got to raise rates. And we, we're going to be raising rates to require water. Everybody around us is raising rates, but it's, it's still not a good to have to raise on, you know, you're, you're paying a lot of money for water now and paying a lot of money for sewer, $90 a month for sewer. And probably the average bill's probably 120 or 20, 25 for, for water, so residential, the voters. Thank you, Sean. Okay, Sherry, anything else? Were still questions?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none, public comment?
David Phelps?
Name's Su Chin. Here in council, David Phelps, Cave Creek President. Not knowing what the outcome of the E-session regarding the sale of the utilities is, looking at this, it seems to me that we're at least trying to maintain the systems for the health, safety and welfare of the town. I appreciate Sean skinning back the expenses as much as he can stand to keep the systems going. I, I do actually would favor the skipping WIFA. I think WIFA has been one of those kind of entities that has given us, given us enough rope to hang ourselves with over the years. And when you add up the impound of the 1.5, the Davis Bacon, the American Steel and the time elements, I'm not so sure that they actually saved us that much money. And yet we got really good loans in terms from them. But when you add on the cost that like the federal grants we got down at our interconnect site with Phoenix, when you add in that prevailing wage standard and the American Steel standard, I mean, just it goes and goes and goes forever. So I would be looking to skip WIFA this time and make sure you can get a reass, reassignment of the loan if possible. If we do have a buyer for the water sewer companies at some point in time to try to make things in transition. to try to make things, uh, in transition more easily acceptable. And remember, uh, before you go to sell your house, be careful about where you're going to put a pool in, be careful about putting in a fireplace, be careful about what color you paint the walls because the new buyer may not like it. Thank you.
That is it. Okay, we're ready for a motion on this. Um, I will make it. If I can find it. Most approved resolution, resolution 2025 dash 20, resolution 2025 dash 21, resolution number 2025 dash 22, resolution number 2025 dash 23, and resolution number 2025 dash 24.
Second.
Okay, um, to me, it's been very clear that we are on the road to, uh, ending subsidies. Staff has presented a plan to do that. We saw that, uh, a few months ago and, uh, the, the thing we're going to see next week is what, what effect that has on the people who elect us and who, uh, count on us to run the town economically and, uh, efficiently. Um, I really like having the options. Uh, I, I can, I congratulate you on having the two pieces to go so that we can negotiate. I mean, you're always going to get better rates if you have some sense of bidding and some sense of, of a bidding process to get the best, uh, best fees. I, I, uh, I tend to like the excise and, uh, uh, when I found out that WIFA required Davis Bacon, uh, and of course we have the WIFA loan for, we see all the signs all over the interconnect project down there. So, uh, I'm going to vote yes.
I don't have a lot to add other than I appreciate your expertise. You have led this town in, in ways that it has never been led financially before and, and, uh, it shows and we appreciate it. We appreciate it very much.
Here, here. Others?
I think it's a really good job and, uh, giving us options is always good. And I do agree with the mayor wholeheartedly that if we can avoid Davis Bacon and American Steel, uh, that should make the projects quite a bit more affordable, even with a slightly higher interest rate.
Cynthia? Oh, no, that was a, I should raised your hand. Okay, uh, so we're ready to, uh, vote then. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? You've got it. Sheri, thank you. This is very good work.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, administrative services staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Carla Reese, Administrative Services Director, here with Brian Poor, our IT Coordinator for tonight's presentation, which my assistant is currently bringing up.
You have the right person to do it. You brought the, the number one presenter.
Okay, as you know, with Grady's reorganization, the administrative services department, pulls together information technology, human resources, risk management and procurement. Currently, we're a department of two. We're both at the table. Uh, we will be onboarding a procurement officer, uh, hopefully some point in the future. So currently want to go over some recruitment activity. Um, we do have a civil engineer position currently posted. We will be posting the procurement position as well, but we did just recruit an executive assistant for Grady. Long time in the making. Uh, her name is Rhonda and she started with us recently and you guys will probably be hearing and seeing her frequently. Out of the applications processed, and this is just for this quarter, we had 147 applications over about three positions. Uh, two of the positions have been filled. One is currently still posted. That's the civil engineer. Some of the performance measures, just as a reminder, that have been assigned to us, we have human resources. Number one, retention rate of regular full-time employees in the initial probationary period. Number two, maintain turnover at or below the national average for state and local government. Number three, track the number of preventable work-related injuries per year. And number four, track the number of lost days due to work-related injuries. Little note on number four, uh, council member Rhodes had requested to see this performance measure also reported as a ratio of lost personnel hours to overall personnel hours. Uh, currently we're fortunate that it's at 0%, but as that data becomes available, I will make sure it's reported in that manner as well. So looking at our employee retention, we're a small organization, should just a couple of losses can spike us. But the, uh, retention rate is set at 80%. Crossing my fingers here, currently we're at 100% for 2025. 2024, we stayed at, uh, also 100%. I do a lot to try to have an open door policy, have employees come and discuss concerns with me if needed. And I have provided some employee mediation, even with a manager at some point in the past, all successfully. Uh, with that being said, we're doing more to try to reach out to the employees, do more employee appreciation. Uh, Grady has, uh, directed us to have a service awards, uh, presentation for employees in the early 2026. So we're hoping to recognize our employees on, uh, five-year basis. But since it has been done in quite a long time, there are going to be quite a few employees receiving various levels of recognition. Again, the employee turnover, which also plays into retention. We follow the Bureau of Labor Statistics data. And currently for 2025, this is ongoing data collection. The national or the local government at a national level is tracking at about 9.9%. We're at about 2% for turnover, which is good. You can see in years past, we are now trending below the Bureau of Labor Standards turnover rate. Uh, 2020 and 2021 were a couple of rough years. I wasn't here, so I don't know what the particulars were there, but I'm sure the pandemic didn't help. For OSHA reporting, this is the one where we have lost time due to work-related injuries. We have had two injuries with no lost time this year. Both were deemed to preventable injuries. We do institute additional safety training when needed and sometimes things just happen and they're deemed, uh, preventable by risk management, but realistically it was, you know, act of God or mother nature, sometimes it interfere and I really don't see how they're preventable. But again, this is how we are reporting right now based on risk management standards. We are at zero for lost time. So some of the focus area goals for the strategic plan, fiscal sustainability. One of the action items, uh, signed is consultants to conduct a staffing and operational process improvement study to improve organizational efficiency. I am a lean six sigma. However, we would need to engage an outside agency to come in and look at that from an third-party expert perspective. I'm not a black belt by any means. I think I only got to my yellow belt. But we are still doing a cost analysis and then we're looking at starting to obtain vendor quotes in the very near future. And it'll probably show up as a supplemental in the FY27 budget request. So we would have liked to have it in FY26, but there were a lot of competing issues this past year for the current fiscal year that we're in. So we're still actively researching, but we don't have any money yet to spend on that. Another goal under fiscal sustainability, enterprise-wide software. I'm going to let Brian speak to that, but he and I did attend an innovations conference and we are actively, uh, undergoing the enduring, whatever you want to call it, demos as we speak, but I'll let Brian take over on this slide.
Thank you. Um, at the moment, this is mostly on hold as we are in the middle of multiple software migrations and it seems like a ill-advised time to engage someone to tell us whether or not we're using them efficiently while we still don't have a, a complete engagement with them.
Another one for fiscal sustainability, uh, benefit study recommendations, uh, that one is completed. We are doing annual review and analysis, but we did implement the budget study presented to council and mayor 2024. We implemented the first enhancements of July of 2024, which are enhancements to our benefits plan. And then in July of 2025, we moved to the Arizona Metropolitan Trust, which again expanded our benefits, uh, greatly for employees. There little bumps on transitions on the administrative side of things, but it's going well. Uh, personally, the, the network that we're in now is Arizona Blue Cross Blue Shield and I'm enjoying some much better rates on some of my ongoing healthcare. Again, fiscal sustainability, enterprise software. Did I go backwards? Oh, no, this is, I must have put it in here twice. So, uh, we are also reviewing AI components, not from a taking our jobs perspective, but just to, uh, for cybersecurity and efficiency. So we're looking at some of the enhanced, uh, what did they call them? AI assistance? Okay, so we're just, we're just kind of seeing what's out there in the market, seeing what our neighbors are doing, uh, trying to kind of gauge best practices in a new and innovative territory, but we don't want to step into the pool until we know if we can swim. So another one, innovative and high-performing organization. Employee training needs assessment, that was completed. We did expand the learning management system in 2023 to include courses that were required for stormwater management and some other compliance issues. We did institute in 2024 management supervisory training with AGTS. Uh, 2025, I just completed an ethics training for the finance employees. And for 2026, I am currently developing a supervisory core series to help our frontline supervisors learn how to be supervisors. Some of them are very good uh, with people, not necessarily documentation or vice versa. So we're going to try to round them out a little bit, get them all those skillsets that they need to succeed in that role. Another item, benchmark and update human resource policies and procedures. Uh, that timeframe was given was FY25. That's in progress. The current policy manual was last approved in 2019 and is going through a, I am going through a comprehensive review and we have an outside consultant also going through a comprehensive review to update based on new employment law involving best practices in the human resources field and just identifying gaps that we have in policy where the policies are either not complete or possibly missing. One of those, uh, does involve FML. Our policy book doesn't speak very well to that. So we're trying to make sure that we've covered all our legal bases, so to speak, and then it will also go through a legal review once that's completed and then brought to council for approval.
Back to me. Um, so I've had the, the pleasure of, uh, helping build the operations center or helping with, make sure it has its, uh, information technology needs, uh, including network cabling, uh, the alarm systems, uh, surveillance cameras. It's, it's been kind of a, a wonderful project to see come together. And I think we're going to be very happy with the result. Likewise, I helped move the technology for the tourism bureau, which was, uh, mostly internet and phone and surveillance cameras. Working heavily, uh, on Casell, uh, as it's, uh, interfacing with, uh, the smart gov software that we're migrating to. And it also has to connect with, uh, with Wells Fargo, our new banking, uh, services. Uh, smart gov is, uh, definitely an ongoing process for us. Uh, it has had a few hiccups, where it connects to, uh, Casell, Wells Fargo and our, uh, blue beam software that does the plan review. It, it's, we see the light at the end of the tunnel, but, uh, it's, it's been something of a challenge. I'm not going to lie. We also has, as, uh, was previously mentioned, have been reviewing AI components, uh, going to, uh, events and watching webinars, familiarizing yourself with what's, what is out there and making sure that, uh, we, we are trying to find out where, where they can plug in to what the town needs. I also was able to, uh, e- engage with checkpoint through the, uh, cybersecurity grant software, which again, I like to always say thank you that you guys approved that for us. Checkpoint is one that's going to be, uh, scanning our email more thoroughly than what the service that we had through Microsoft and is going to give us access to some training resources. So I'm very glad to engage with that. I do have a note there for security cameras that I already mentioned, uh, that we've done with the operations center and tourism bureau. But along with, uh, Adam and Luke, we have also put those at other locations and on, uh, speed trailers to make sure that we have a, a, a better handle on security of our items.
So moving into risk management, strategic priority, innovative and high-performing organization. Goal number one listed as prioritize the wellbeing and safety of team members by ensuring a culture that creates a physically and psychologically safe and supportive environment for all to thrive. We're working very, well, I'm working very hard on that, especially from the mediation standpoint and the psychologically safe. The physically safe, uh, Southwest Risk will once again be scheduled to perform an onsite safety survey at town hall, our water plant, water ranch, maybe some of our new facilities, just to show them off a little bit. I hope they're safe. Uh, the 2024 report that we received from Southwest Risk did note, no major, no major violations were noted. Some minor things like having, uh, installations for our fire extinguishers, fire extinguishers rather than just having them lie about. And then some other recommendations have been, uh, corrected. Over time, we had some bottles that weren't properly labeled for material safety data, et cetera, but not, there were no major violations and everything was rectified within just a few days. So again, I mentioned the procurement manager recruitment is to launch soon. The procurement manager will be responsible for planning, directing and coordinating the town's centralized procurement and contracting functions. Um, this is to get the most bang for our buck and to make sure that we're reviewing every contract option, piggybacking contracts that are available from other entities. We're small, so we don't necessarily get the best deal, so to speak, but if we can piggyback some of those bigger co- uh, contracts. But the procurement manager is the one who has the expertise to navigate through all of those options in those fields. So we're looking forward to having somebody of that capability onboard. So some additional items we're looking into from the benefit side, standby pay, rate comparison to benchmark municipalities, wellness initiatives. We just had our cardiac organ and hearing screening held in here yesterday, October 6th. We filled all of our appointments and I hope to have some data soon. I don't, I do know from a personal standpoint, I'm not violating HIPAA here because it's me. Uh, they did find one thing that I need to follow up with my doctor for. So early intervention is the key. So we're really happy that, uh, we had that event. We still have two more wellness initiative events for the employees at large scheduled for the rest of the year. And then for training and professional development opportunities, we're undergoing exploration for July. Like I said earlier, for the supervisory leadership scale development series. And some of that will be in done internally with me. But then we're also looking to possibly do a supplemental next year to bring in some outside presenters and other subject matter experts. And then for exit interview data, uh, we're in the process of developing what I would call stay interviews so that hopefully we can intervene with employees prior to them looking for another job or obtaining another job and find out what we can do to increase job satisfaction for them. And that's it.
I have a question. I, I just want to say thank you. Um, training, the software, the, the whole package seems to be working really well. I'm just as pleased with your department as I am with finance. I mean, I, it's a sea change over the last two years. And, you know, job well done.
Well, thank you for both of us.
Comments? Cynthia?
Uh, just one question about, um, uh, staff satisfaction with the current, uh, medical insurance.
So while I have not done a poll per se to collect data, the feedback I have received is largely positive. I've only had one, um, negative incident that we're going to be bringing up with the group at large for Arizona Metropolitan Trust to make a future change. But other than that, all the employees have been super happy with so far their experience in the new network.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nothing to approve. So thank you very much. Certainly echo the compliments you've gotten and it's been a good meeting tonight. So thank you very much. We have completed our agenda. So by state law, meeting is earned.
Good. Well, we have dinner.
I'm having leftover pizza and salad. How's that sound?
That's, that works. Have you had the crust?